G G test.
I love her name.
Leslie Hervey, interim clerk.
Good afternoon, I'm county commissioner Denise Strehouse.
Jeff Aludo, county administrator.
Thank you so much, I'm Stephanie Summer Odum, is president of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. We just have a few things on our agenda today, but very important items. Before I get started, I'd like to say, just say a few words. If security could please bring over the first playoff ball? Security forgot the ball. What kind of security are you? So anyway, but what I will say, and I'll wait for a minute. I was, I had an interview this morning, just a little bit ago, about our arts grant and cultural organizations grant that's coming up. It's our second round of, for the arts and cultural organizations. Our first round, we spent 3.5 million through our CARES Act. And then the second round, which opened today, will be 2 million for our second round. And Artways is going to coordinate the process of the application process. And they've done a great job before, and I'm sure they will again. And I just want to say, we know arts and cultural organizations, they relieve our stress, they help with our mental health, and somewhat like the Bengals have done. Security? And so I just wanted to take a word, to say a few words, because people say, oh, not that again. Yes, that again, and we're proud to do it. Congratulations to the Cincinnati Bengals. What a powerful demonstration of teamwork that they showed this Saturday. Joe Burrow, and Jamar Chase, and Joe Mixon, all had a great game this Saturday, this last Saturday. However, the player's name that sealed things for the Bengals was, of course, Evan McPherson, who was the kicker. Congratulations Evan. Woo 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 woo, Hoot Day, Hoot Day, Hoot Day, you guys. And congratulations to Cincinnati also. And it's funny, because I watched all the playoff games, and every one of them ended with a field goal. That is really something different. So, we want to thank them for their success, and we're moving forward for our next success, and to the Super Bowl. So I just wanted to thank them again for bringing excitement to us. We know with everything going on in this county, we need something to distract us, and something good to distract us. And so we're going to move on to our commissioner, our health commissioner, Mr. Greg Kestner, who's going to talk about COVID-19 and our comprehensive update. Welcome Greg.
Well, thank you very much for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to give an update. So today, for the first time in more than a month, I'm able to say that our actual cases per, active cases within Hamilton County have decreased slightly. So, last week, we were at 40,000 active cases in Hamilton County. This week, we were at 38,000. So certainly heading in the right direction, from my perspective. Maybe a little bit more graphic or telling is the seven-day average. January 16th, we had 2,470 cases, and today, we are down to 1,221. Now, I say that, and it sounds wonderful, seeing the cases drop by half, but this is the same map that I shared, this is from today, and we still have tons of COVID in our community. And so, as I run through some of these slides, where we see a little bit of trending in the right direction, I think, I don't want us to take it for granted, that where we've come, and how we've gotten here, and the hard work. We still need to work hard together as a community, to get through the rest of the pandemic. Today, kind of mirroring our cases, our reproductive value is at almost an all-time low, at 0.65. When you see cases drop so drastically, it's an indication that things are shrinking, so that's good news. For the region, we are at 0.77. Our percent positivity for the region is at 31.7. Hamilton County, I'll share in a moment, but it's even lower than that. Hospitalizations, intensive care unit admissions, and ventilators still remain extremely high. When you look at hospitalizations, they have dropped, which is excellent news. Today, we are at 950 individuals in the hospital systems with COVID-19. And that is lower than where we were a week ago, but to the point that I've already made, it is higher than any other peak in this pandemic. We are still inundating our hospitals with people with COVID-19. And so caution still continues to be needed. Our ICUs are at 192 today, and our ventilators are at 130. And I like to share this information too, with regards to deaths. We are seeing between four and five deaths per day, so we continue to have a significant impact with this pandemic. Turning to the Centers for Disease Control map, the entire state of Ohio remains high transmission. Hamilton County is no differently, although these metrics are improving. Today, we are at 1,272 cases per 100,000. Our percent positivity is at 17.64. The vaccination clinics continue to make progress. We continue to see the most progress in the five to 11-year-olds, and the younger age groups. But all age groups, we're seeing people come in for boosters and first doses, which is always exciting. We still operate at the Board of Elections. As we see a decrease in numbers at the BOE, we're starting to transition into more mobile units, so back into the community, which is great news. We'll be focusing on areas with high social vulnerability indexes. And lastly, you've seen this slide before, but testing, if you need testing or vaccinations, this is the website I recommend, testandprotectcinc.com. It's a great resource, still maintained, and it really does have accurate information. Plenty of availability for testing, plenty of locations everywhere in Hamilton County for getting the vaccine. I will stop there and turn it over for any questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I had one question, as it relates to hospitalizations. Is there a way we can break down the demographics of the hospitalizations? African-American, white Americans, and, because that would be, of course, indicative of, hopefully, we would know who's not getting vaccinated. So, these numbers, these graphs are good, but can we break down specifically the hospitalizations?
Yep, let me check with my epidemiology team, and either next week when I report back, or in two weeks, depending on how long it takes them to do some data analysis, but I should be able to do that.
And that would be great, if we could maybe do it for the deaths also?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Vice President Bries, any questions or comments?
Yes, first of all, it's good to hear that the numbers are going down, not just here, but across the country.
That's right.
So, and I saw something where Dr. Fauci said these days may be behind us, so that was positive, certainly want to be cautious, but it's going in the right direction, going down, so thank you very much.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Strehouse?
Just very quickly, thank you again for your presentation, and thanks to your team. We did have the vaccination clinic here last week. It went, it went well. And once again, your team stepped up, and they were very courteous, they were encouraging people to get the vaccination, get information, so thanks again for all the continued work of public health.
Thanks for that, I'll take that back to them as well.
Thank you so much, and thank you for bringing up about the clinic on the 19th. Even though the numbers were lower, if we can get one person that's vaccinated or boosted, that's a success.
Every shot counts, that's right.
Yeah, there you go. So thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam President, before we go to the next item, you had mentioned the Bengals, and I just wanted to highlight, I know that your office has asked us on Thursday, and we're asking, I guess, everybody. That'd be our spirit day, Hoot Day, put our jerseys on. And you write about Evan McPherson, I was screaming to everybody, get you a number two jersey, they must have heard me. They said, I saw on Twitter, there are no more McPherson jerseys available anywhere. So, just wanted to highlight that, for those who want to wear that. And then also, I had gotten a call from a constituent, who wanted to see, like they did in other cities, when they have these, when they have these playoff games, and championship games, where they are in their stadiums, if they can't make it to the location. And I did present that, I think it's a good thing. We have something in our contract that allows us to do county days, and looking forward, I know our administrator is working to see if that's something we can pull off now, but that's something that I wanted to let people know, when you do give us ideas, we do try to bring those ideas forward. And I think it would be a great thing, and I'm getting all kinds of calls about it, so hopefully we'll be able to do it. It's just such an exciting time, for our city and our county. And like Madam President said, we have, we have fans outside of Hamilton County that are, have been rocking with us, sometimes in lonely areas. I know my cousin in Chicago, he's so happy that he's able to wear the Bengals with pride. So, looking forward to that, and just wanted to mention that, if people want to put their, put their jerseys on, on Thursday.
Thank you so much. Did you want to make any comments? Okay. Very good, thank you for bringing that up also. Our next, and I was going to say, those that are over there, even though you're separated by chairs, there are a few chairs over here, if you'd like to do that also. Okay, so we have, our next item is convention district planning. Jeff is, our administrator is going to bring out some of those, some items, just to introduce, but as promised, my colleagues have a resolution in front of you. We've all had the ability to make some corrections, additions, revisions to the resolution. The title of the resolution, we're not going to discuss it right now, I'm going to let Jeff start it off, and then he'll, we'll go from there. But the title of the resolution is a resolution for those that are watching, in support of coordinating with the City of Cincinnati on a redevelopment strategy for the downtown Convention Center District. And who knows, that title may change, I don't know. But we certainly needed to discuss it, it's extremely important to our downtown area, and we need to move forward to make that happen, but to ensure that we're all in agreement with how that does happen. So I'm going to open it up to Jeff Aludo.
Madam President, I just might need to make one correction. At least my office, I have not had a chance to make revisions, corrections, or inclusion to the resolution. I received it, I think it's 7:00 AM this morning, and I thought today was the discussion to go forward with it. So I just wanted to just, and I've been in meetings back-to-back all day. So, I do have it forward, I look forward to going through it, but I have not submitted any revisions or corrections at this time.
So this is the first time you're seeing it, you haven't been involved?
Yes, 7:00 AM is the first time that I saw it. They kept saying, it's another revision, it's another revision.
Yeah, we kept revising it, but did you see the initial one at all?
There's several initial ones.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But I have not included my comments in them, because I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Okay, but...
But I look forward to doing that, after today's presentation.
Okay, so, maybe you can comment on the revisions, or the first one you got, the second one you got, maybe you can make some comments about that, what you have already seen. Okay, that would be great. Mr. Aludo.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I just wanted to provide a little bit of background for, you know, the board is mostly steeped in this, but mostly for the public, who's, who may want to understand the county's role in convention, just convention and tourism activities within our community, and how that gets us to the point of considering a resolution to move forward with convention district planning. So, the county's actually been involved as a major investor in our, with our convention infrastructure for quite some time. Bridget, if you want to hit the first slide there. So, just a couple of things, I'm going to keep this very short, and I also want to say, I have, Mr. Adam Gelter is here from 3CDC, I'm going to turn it over to him to talk specifically about some very specific, more specific scope of work items related to convention district planning. But just historically, the county has been involved, going back to the early 2000s and 2006, with the expansion of the Duke Energy Convention Center, back then the Albert Saban Convention Center, through the implementation of a three-and-a-half percent transient occupancy tax. More recently, the county's been involved in acquiring the property of the former Millennium Hotel, to remove what had been a blight, and an anchor on our ability to attract and retain conventions in our community, and the opportunity to attract a first-class headquarter, a convention hotel for the community, which is instrumental to drive additional convention and tourism. I also put a note on there, that we've even helped with the development and expansion of the Sharonville Convention Center, up in the northern part of the county, because we do have multiple convention nodes here in Hamilton County. We've been involved in helping to fund all of those. So, in our downtown convention district, we know that we currently have many challenges and opportunities. Bridget, if you could hit the slide? So, first and foremost, we know that COVID-19 has significantly delayed the prospects for expanding the Duke Energy Convention Center. Just a couple of years ago, we were talking about an imminent expansion of the convention center, mostly financed through the county's occupancy tax model. The county's occupancy tax has held up through COVID, which is amazing, actually, and is a testament to the diligence of the board, and of the CFA, in stewarding those resources, and making sure that the, that the county's resources and the occupancy tax have held up through the pandemic, at a time when everything else tourism-related has been pretty much decimated, at least in the early months and days of the pandemic. The Millennium Hotel demolition is on time and on budget for completion in the summer of 2022, so that's a good thing, to get that property under control, and to get it demolished. In the interim, we know that we have a lack of headquarter hotel and committable room capacity, which places Cincinnati at a competitive disadvantage. We have a tired and relatively blighted convention district compared to our competition and other competitor communities, which is obviously a challenge we face. But we also know that the Millennium Hotel acquisition, and some of the other work going on throughout the convention district places approximately seven acres around the Duke Energy Center, under public control, either through the county, the city, or the port. Bridget? So here's a map that shows, at a high level, some of those properties. And specifically, I really want to call attention to, obviously, the convention center, which is the light green shaded, and the, whatever that color is, we'll call it orange and black, right, for today? So, the, the orange and black, with black letters around the convention center, which shows the public property that is in play, which really gives us, as a community, an opportunity that few communities have, and that is to control our own destiny, as it relates to expanding and revitalizing our convention district. Bridget? So, last year, I think it was in 2021, Convention Sports and Leisure had provided some recommendations to the city, the county, and the business community, related to some priorities. Number one, priority one is a new 800-room convention center hotel. Number two, is absent the ability to expand the convention center, to initiate some upgrades to the Duke Energy Center, focused on things that modern convention-goers want to see, in terms of pre-function space, outdoor space utilization, et cetera. To link the Duke Energy Center with other nodes in the community, over the Rhine, the riverfront, Fountain Square, et cetera. And then ultimately, to expand the Duke Energy Center, when funding is available. So those are the main priorities that CSL called out, in terms of putting Hamilton County and Cincinnati on a more competitive playing field with its, with its competitive communities. Bridget? So, in terms of moving that forward, county and the city have talked about the need for coordinated planning on this. Number one, pursue a developer for a headquarter convention hotel. And to do that coordination work, as it relates to needed improvements at the Duke Energy Center, to assess the development potential for surrounding properties, and look at the best and highest use for the Millennium Hotel site as well. Bridget? And so in terms of the path forward, the idea was to engage 3CDC to perform those, those planning and pre-development services. The City of Cincinnati is considering a resolution this week, on the same topic, so we're working in concert with our friends over at the city. And the idea is to leverage 3CDC's experience with place-making in the urban core, and obviously, if approved by the board, the administration would then negotiate an MOU with the city and 3CDC, consistent with the board's policy direction. So that, that, Madam President and Commissioners, is at a high level, some recent history on this, and what brings us to this point. I know Mr. Adam Gelter is here, who can provide some more specifics on the direct scope of work that would be associated with this. Madam President, any comments?
No comments to that, we can keep our notes. I see Jeff Burden is here.
I didn't see if...
Yeah, would you like to make a couple of comments?
Yeah, this pillar is, you've been in this room before, you know the promise of our pillar.
Madam President, before we get to that, I do have a question for the administrator. You mentioned the Millennium Hotel, which was torn down, or is being torn down. It is a, we're going to be using, but we use bonds by the taxpayers. And then there was a lawsuit that came out, and there's a $5 million judgment. Where is that on the Millennium Hotel?
Where, I'm sorry?
Where are we on that, regarding the Millennium Hotel?
So, I know, I've taught, had some recent conversations with the port, I'm not sure where they are with their legal response on that, but we're supposed to have a follow-up conversation with them shortly, to figure out where they are on whether there's going to be an appeal, or any kind of legal response on that, before we know exactly how that judgment will come into play.
Thank you, I'd like to know that, and have that out, so the people in the public know where we are with that particular property.
Sure.
Thank you.
I know you had discussed that with all of the board, and we were waiting to see what action was going to happen.
Correct.
So, and as soon as something happens, I'm sure we'll be informed of that. Hello, sir, how are you?
Hello.
You had a few words you'd like to say, Ms. Burden?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, to the county commissioners and staff, I appreciate your time today. We're excited to work with you on this topic. I am here in my capacity as a leader of our 2026 FIFA World Cup host city effort, as board chair of the Convention Visitors Bureau, where Madam President is an active board participant and leader, and as someone who's been working closely on efforts related to tourism, and attracting people in our city for a couple decades. Today is exciting, because we have a historic opportunity, as a result of the leadership of the county, the city, the port authority, the CFA, the CVB, among others, to finally consider the convention district as a whole, rather than piece by piece, without a strategy. You all know that, from a tourism perspective, our region is more and more attractive every day. Visitors from all over the world value our diversity, appreciate that there's much to do here, love that our city is walkable, bikeable, and has effective public transit. We have vibrant and diverse businesses throughout our downtown, and in our neighborhoods, and over and over again, we're making the best-of lists that bring people here. That's all good. And yet, our convention center and the area immediately around it, has stalled for a lack of strategy. As a community, we haven't evaluated the future of our convention center in some time. The parcels around the convention center are vacant or underdeveloped, and we all know what was, what's going on with the Millennium Hotel. Thank you to our county commission, for your leadership on the decision to put the Millennium site in play. Let me underscore the importance of the hotel. Without it, it will be nearly impossible for us to host the World Cup. And that is the single biggest tourism event it would be in the history of our city. The World Cup will fill the Paul Brown Stadium, with attendees from around the world for multiple matches, while attracting a global TV audience, boosting our economy, and highlighting what we want the world to know about this region, our beautiful community. Just to give you a sense, the total economic impact of the World Cup 2026 is about $5 billion, with some 40,000 jobs. A Super Bowl, which we all want the Bengals with one more win to get to, if we were hosting a Super Bowl, it would be an economic impact of about 300 to 500 million, again compared to 5 billion. The media exposure of a World Cup is about 1.1 billion, Super Bowl's about 150 million. So, this is enormously important to show that we will have sufficient hotel rooms for these visitors who come in from around the globe in 2026. January 31 is the deadline, where we're trying to get all the information to the FIFA Committee, to evaluate Cincinnati in comparison to these other cities. So we look forward to getting these resolutions passed, as a start of the process, but signaling that we have public leadership, that it, that will be working to get a new headquarters hotel online in 2025, and that they can see that while they're evaluating Cincinnati. So today, the Millennium Hotel is on the way down, the port and other allied entities have control over the property, as the administrator just shared, around the convention center, and there's a civic will to dream about the convention district, that can be the envy of cities across the country. Over the past several months, we've been in conversations with city, county civic leaders, to assess what must happen for us finally to compete with other peer cities in our convention district space. We all agree that the biggest challenge is that there has never been one leading organization to set the overarching strategy for the convention district. Effectively, a lot of, a lot of cooks in the kitchen, but no chef running the show. And so, we, today, we're excited that you will consider the resolution that points 3CDC is the lead development manager for the project, not the developer of the project, the lead manager, as sort of the chef, helping to orchestrate with all the different cooks, of which there are many important ones, no more important than our elected officials at the county, who brought us the opportunity, and then the city. Adam Gelter is going to explain the role in more detail, but what I can tell you with certainty, is that there is no other organization ready and able to do this, and ready to do it right, leading the process. Just a sense, because you were such important partners at the county, I'm not here, I want to stress, but you were an important partner, I'm not here representing FC Cincinnati, but the World Cup bid and the CVB. I just want to point out, though, that when people set their mind to inclusion, and getting it right is an important public policy, even on the private side, you can get, we can get great results. On our project, 25% MBE, 7% WBE, 30% SBE, over 70% spending in these underrepresented categories, over $180 million spent with those private businesses, largely small businesses. So you know that when we say it's a priority, we can see real results. So 3CDC and the staff have created the most vibrant and welcoming public spaces, they know how to do complex development projects inclusively and thoughtfully, and they know how to create partnerships to get big things done. So I'm excited that they're willing to do this project, and now I can turn it over to Adam from 3CDC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Burden, if you want to wait a second, were there any questions or comments, as it relates to Mr. Burden's comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Jeff, for being here. You and I have been friends for a long time, and as you know, we're moving forward, we got to get the best business deal. You mentioned the World Cup, and certainly we all are excited about that, but I have yet to see a bid package, and I've been asking, I understand you're saying that one of the requirements is a hotel. Do you have a copy, as the head of CVB, of the bid package, and what that investment, so we can have a list of, here's everything we got to finance? And then here, I understand your economic impact, but I was reading that there's tax-free zones, and some, some cities dropped out, Chicago, some others, because they couldn't make money. The public would put in the money, but we wouldn't make any money. So, I've been asking for a bid package, because when we talk about numbers, we got to look at, you know, what is the things that we're going to be responsible for? How much is that going to cost the taxpayers? Because we're not just, you know, like you said, we're not just cooks in the kitchen, we actually own the kitchen. So can you, do you have that available, or is that... So can you, do you have that available, or is that available that we know what we have to, what we're responsible for?
Madam President and Commissioner, I had thought that staff had shared all the relevant information with you, so I'll go back and see why that hasn't. I want to be really clear. FIFA has not said you have to have a hotel. What we have heard is that they have concerns that we don't have enough hotel rooms. So if we are going to take advantage of this opportunity, and we think it's an enormous opportunity as I let out, we would be well-served to give a level of confidence that we are going to get the hotel. I think we're going to get the hotel because, at the end of the day, as a community, we need it. Since March of 2020, we've lost definite cancellations, 193 groups, 194,000 room nights, 210,000 attendees, 86 million in direct sales economic impact, 162 million total sales economic impact that we've lost. So my only point being, I think for the betterment of our community, we're going to have to solve the hotel. I'm asking, can, if there's the ability to, can we signal to FIFA that as a community, we understand we have to replace the Millennium, we're going to replace the Millennium, and we're going to do so on schedule, open a new hotel in 2025, so that if we are awarded, and they're going to make that decision here in the next few months, Cincinnati as a host city, we want them to know that we will have more hotel rooms then. So I just want to stress, they're not saying you must build the hotel, nor are they saying that the county has to pay for the hotel. They're just saying, are you going to have enough hotel rooms? And we're trying to communicate to them on a schedule that allows us potentially, we hope, to win the bid.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. In the administration, I had asked about that, so if there is a bid package, I would like to see it. But the other thing I wanted to say, and you know, I'm coming from this industry, so I very much know it, been the deputy director of tourism, brought in over $100 million in conventions, one sitting there, the NAACP, Joe Mallory, who's here, who came twice. Majority of those conventions are African-Americans that have brought, but African-Americans ain't at the table, they're not leading this, they're the afterthought, and I'm trying to kind of change that. But you mentioned the impact of FC, and I think that's great. You also showed that, at a meeting I was at, you're building a hotel yourself. Will that help with some of the room nights that we're going to be needing?
If we're going to have 100,000-plus visitors from around the world, we're going to need all the hotel rooms we can get. When we had the USA-Mexico match, I think there was 90% at capacity in the hotels within the urban core of downtown, and I think 70%, don't quote me on the number, but about 70% between the airport and Mason. So if you're going to have an event that's, you know, multiple times USA-Mexico, I think all the hotel projects are going to help. We're going to have a small, we hope to have a small boutique hotel next to our stadium, but that's nowhere near akin to 800 rooms across the street from the convention center that could be used to support hopefully the Masons and the NAACP and all the other events that, and you and I have discussed it, they want a hotel that's really connected, that can be convenient for meetings, rooms, and other things, and ultimately, that's what we're trying to advance here. And it's just, again, Adam can speak to this, but I'll speak since I'm here in my role. This is just the first step in the process. This by no means is a development plan. This is just saying someone needs to be empowered to pull all the entities to the table advising and being advised by policymakers ultimately to get this project moving forward so that we can open a new hotel in 2025, and we have these rooms to make sure that we're attracting so our Convention Visitors Bureau staff can start booking these big, big conventions for '25 when we knew this hotel will be open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Drew House, did you have anything?
I'm going to save my questions till the end of the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Madam President, Commissioners, thanks for having me. I'm Adam Gelter with 3CDC. Just going to sort of not try to belabor anything that's already been said, but add a few fresh items here. So as Jeff had mentioned, Jeff Aludo had mentioned, there is really a pretty clear steps here of getting the hotel, evaluating the existing convention center, looking at the sites around there and how they can connect back to the city. And the only other thing that wasn't really highlighted is, we do need to figure out interim use for the Millennium Site. It is a great site to expand the convention center, but we don't think that's in the cards in the immediate future. We need to preserve that ability in the interim, we got to do something there. So thinking through what that is and how we do that as a community is an important step to what we'll do here. I think you all have some familiarity with our track record of things like Music Hall, Washington Park, Ziegler Park, these mixed-use spaces. So this is something that we have done and have a lot of experience in. You see 8451 and Foundry, those areas, we're working right in that area at Fourth and Race and the old Macy's. This is something that we feel very passionate about. It's been very clear in working with the city, who voted 8-0 out of committee last week to move this project forward, that diversity, inclusion, equity are very important pieces of what this is. It's something that's been important to 3CDC in our past, will be important as we move forward with this project. We've completed over 15 projects with minority-owned general contractors, including some big ones, Fountain Square and City Gospel Mission, 15th and Vine. We have, as Jeff mentioned, a number of projects with very strong percentage MBE participation on the job, including projects as high as 45%. And we really work to build relationships with those contractors, too, so it's not just that we have folks on our jobs, we know those folks, we have regular conversations with them, we include them in the process. We're talking to them even when we don't have a project, so that we're all on the same page. When we do have a project, we know where we're moving forward. Another area that we have really focused on over the last few years in particular is getting more black-owned businesses into our storefronts. And so we've increased over 100% in the last two years, the number of black-owned businesses in our storefronts. That's 21% of our total, and over 28% of our businesses in over the Rhine. We've really made this a focus over the last few years. We also, this is potentially relevant to the Millennium Site, where it'll be a public site, so likely we'll have some kind of programming. We really pride ourselves on the diverse programming that we do at Fountain Square, at Washington Park, at Ziegler Park, and even at Memorial Hall, where we're trying to do different events that attract different folks from throughout our community to these, and that's something that will continue to the event that we have that kind of space at the Millennium. And then this is, I think, really important. What I want to be clear, and this is kind of touched on by everyone, but I'm not sure it's totally clear, is that our role here is not as the developer, we're not looking to get paid anything for doing this work. What we're trying to do is sort of quarterback the effort and try to get everyone aligned on a plan that moves forward. There would not be, we would not have any power to implement that plan. We'd have to bring it back with all the parties, the city, the county, the port, and the Convention Facilities Authority, in order to spend any money or move anything forward. Idea is that we could work with all the parties with sort of that emphasis behind us that the city and county are on board to try to come up with a plan to do this. So we're not actually getting paid, and we're not looking to develop this ourselves or own any of this space ourselves. We're looking to try to work with all the parties, get everyone's feedback, and present a plan back to everyone to move this thing forward.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open it up for any questions or comments as it relates to, well, all the participants who have given comments. So Vice President Reese, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. I have several. Not, let's start with the resolution.
We'll get to the resolution as it relates to the people that have presented.
Oh, the people that were talking.
Yeah.
Well, I want to go back to the premise of what I'm looking for, and that is ownership. And I really believe that we should do a national search and look at other cities that have done this already, a convention district successfully. I'm interested in an Atlanta model, like they did with the airport, and it took the courage and sometimes not popularity of the elected officials in Atlanta to say, we won't build this airport until we have some ownership stake in it. Now, 3CDC, I was around when it was created. I was on city council, so I have nothing against 3CDC. We had to get it for you to come here. But there were some things I've learned over the years that I would have done differently that I didn't do then. One, it was the same pitch. We're not here to get any money. We could do it for free, so everybody loves that, all free. But we gave over the programming to Fountain Square. We gave the parking revenue, and we also gave some buildings in over the Rhine. Since that time, 3CDC and nothing against it, you've done over the Rhine, but there has been some gentrification. You have listed some African-American businesses, but these businesses are just renting. If you were to get a different job, or Steve Leeper, who I like, if he say, I'm going on to do something else, I'm stuck with the entity with not the right paperwork. So these businesses are renting from you as a landlord, and what I'm trying to push now, we're in 2022, I did that in, what, 2005? I don't want the 2005 model, I want an ownership-partnership model. And so when I look at the presentation that you made, we do have more businesses, but they all are renting, and if you go up on the rent, most of them be out of business. There is no ownership of any buildings. Now, when we do this district, it is said in the scope of service, I know we're going to get more into it, but everything has changed except this scope of service package. And this scope of service is a lot on programming. We spent $39 million. I wasn't here, but we spent $39 million for Millennium, and you mean to tell me what we going to get is some green space and some activities? We got to get more than that off of $39 million that the people are on the hook for. They were looking to get a hotel. They were looking to get something to get that $39 million back. They weren't looking to have some singing and dancing and programming. So that's a problem that we've got to get back to the people on as well. In this also, I am, I've got a article that came from Pete Whitty on the west side of town, West Price Hill. He's on the Convention Facility Authority, and he's in here. He's a Caucasian gentleman. He's not, so he's not a Democratic Republican, and I think he's Republican. He put in here, "The time is now for our region to put up or shut up with the possible construction of a new convention center, hotel, convention, expansion, and new district around the convention center, all of which require significant public investment." Now, we keep saying we got a lot of cooks in this, is all of this is paid for by the public money, and we're going to turn it over to a non-elected entity, with all due respect. But we are the only people, took me 200,000 people to get down here, not three votes, not two votes, and I'm going to be held accountable if it's not done correctly. He said, "We should use this as an opportunity to create true minority equity, not 15%, not inclusion, because we don't water that word down, but how do we get partnership from the..." I want the general manager to the quarterback, to all of the other components. Construction, you come in one time, you lay some concrete, you paint some walls, you out. These things we're building will be around forever. So for me, I want to make sure that we do it correctly, because I don't think we'll have another project like this in a long time, and we have not done a good job on those public projects in the past. So my question to you is, on this, I know Steve Leeper said people begged him to do it and everything, and I don't know who did that, I wouldn't want you to do something you don't want to do, but why would we not do a national search? We do it for stuff like a superintendent of a public school. Why wouldn't we do the national search? Because it seems like all you're going to do is do a national search.
Yeah. Madam President, Commissioner, there's a lot there, and I'll try to respond as I can, but first by saying, I think you're, I do agree with you a little bit that what we're suggesting is that we would be the person coordinating all the folks here, because the city, it's the county, it's the port, who's invested a lot of money in this as well. It's the CFA, which I actually happen to be a member of as well. I've worked with Pete on the CFA for a number of years, and I think he has a good perspective in general on what, and some knowledge about what we're talking about. So we do intend to do a national search for the developer of a hotel. We do agree that there's a real opportunity that we need to try to seek to have ownership, minority ownership be a big part of that. And again, we're not suggesting that we would, we're not empowered to go cut a deal with any money, or spend any of your money, or spend any taxpayer money. What we're saying is, we're going to help get everybody aligned to do that, because if the county goes, does it, and the city's not there, or the port does it and everyone else not there, what everyone else is saying is, if we can pull those, everyone's thoughts together, we can then go do a national search, go look at the models of other cities, and we can help create a plan that we bring back to you to decide if you think it's worthy of spending taxpayer money. So we don't intend to do that. And on the Millennium Site, again, we, I think, are in agreement that that was a lot of money to spend for some kind of outdoor space, but that's meant to be a temporary thing, because I think everyone agrees that long-term, the studies that we had done, I think everyone that's been looking at this agrees that long-term, the expansion of the convention center is a very positive thing, and the ability to do that is very important. Not only that, getting rid of those rooms, which we weren't able to use for conventions very well because they were so poor, but, so they're hurting us. Getting rid of those rooms makes it easier to bring someone in to do a new hotel, because they're not competing against a really inferior product but at a very low price point. And so it's, this actually really makes the hotel viable now that the Millennium isn't there anymore. So there is some element of getting a hotel from what we've spent, because there's a real trade-off there. So I think that's positive. Then going back to sort of 3CDC's record on inclusion, and you're right, all our tenants, not just the minority tenants, are renters, because we're the owners of the buildings. That's not the model that we would be pursuing here. That's how we've developed over the Rhine, because we wanted to control the commercial space, not because we didn't want anyone to get ownership, we don't want our tenants to make money. Absolutely, we want our tenants to make money, because we keep our rents low, we work with our tenants when they have issues. They all have leases, they're all going to be there when I leave, when Steve leaves, because they have long-term leases that they've negotiated with us that'll be in place. But we want to make sure that we get the right tenants and the buildings stay in the right hands, and that is regardless of who the tenants are, that we have tenants of further development of the neighborhood, and we don't get check cashers and other people into the spaces that we've created there that sort of bring a negative to the community. That's why we hold on to ownership there. It has nothing to do with not wanting folks to build their equity, and I think we're very open to strategies, and we're working with some of our upcoming tenants on strategies that they could purchase their space from us in the future at a rate that gives them the benefit for the rent they've paid us, because we do want them to have buildup equity in their business. So these are all things that we're working on. We, again, agree with you with, you know, the model that we had maybe 15 years ago isn't the model that we should be pursuing now. We got to look at what other folks are doing, how we can do it better.
Do you have experience in doing a convention district? Have you done one?
I have not, but Steve Leeper, my boss, did build the convention center and developed the area around in Pittsburgh.
And my last thing is, in your scope of service, it talks about buying up properties around Covica Center, and that jumped out at me, because again, I don't, I want to see some African-American ownership. I know we always throw out the worst thing, like, oh, check cash and play, but I mean, there's some African-Americans that actually have good, you know, and we've got national people. You know, Magic Johnson could come in and probably do a partnership. He's done it all over the country.
Yeah.
So how do we get ownership? Because it says you're going to be acquiring more land around Covica Center.
Madam President, Commissioner, I think what that was referring to specifically, and it was sort of alluded to in the slide that Jeff put up with the map, is there is a parking lot that sits right in between the site that would be probably the most logical site for the hotel at Fifth and Plum and the port-owned former convention Place Mall. There's a garage there that's privately owned, and I think that's the thought, is, do we as a community get control of that parking to then support whatever development we do? And that's a question that we don't have the answer to, but that's, I think that's what that was referring to.
Okay. That should be probably spelled out a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say a couple comments before I move on to Commissioner Drew House. The bottom line is, there is an urgency to get started, to coordinate those stakeholders that are in our community, private nonprofits, all that we decide to move in as stakeholders to make the decision about just getting started on the development of this headquarter hotel. The bottom line is, we need a headquarter hotel. The bottom line is, January 31, we need to make a decision, not a decision on a developer, but a decision on a headquarter hotel, regardless of FIFA coming or not. We need a larger, more expansive headquarter hotel, and we don't have the time right now. We will, I'm sure, for a developer to go nationally. We need a larger, uh, more expansive headquarter hotel. And we don't have the time right now, we will, um, I'm sure, for a developer to go nationally. But I want to know that I, um, personally had a good faith effort to make this possibility of the World Cup, um, and if they decide for us, for us to come, for them to come, and maybe this $5 billion that was mentioned, uh, that Hamilton County can get some of that. Um, and so we do need to get off the dime and start getting people involved in making this come to fruition. Um, so there, and I agree, there has been a lack of strategy on how we're going to do that. Uh, that will be more jobs for people, uh, just more opportunity for those that are in our county. And we don't have the, um, luxury of waiting. Um, we have to start pulling people together, and we have to decide on who's going to do it, uh, before the 31st. Um, and 3CDC has a track record of doing great work in our county. And so, um, yeah, and it would be good if, and I'm really, uh, I was really concerned about the fact that everyone has not had an opportunity, or, uh, Ms. Reese, uh, has not had an opportunity to look at everywhere as on this resolution, because I know we worked on it all weekend, everybody, I thought, back and forth, so I was just, just a little surprised on that. But we will go over the resolution today, because on, uh, Thursday, we will be voting on the resolution.
Madam President, hold on one second, please. Uh, you know, given us something that we, I, I didn't go back and forth on this all weekend. So I wanna get that straight, no, I gotta get that straightened out. I'm a straight, no, wait, and the January 31st.
Hold on for a minute.
No, what is January 31st? You said there's a-
Hold on for a second, okay. January 31st, um, they, the FIFA needs to know whether or not we are in agreement, um, to having a, um, headquarter hotel. Um, so when they look at the, because they're in the process of selecting who they want, uh, to be, to participate in FIFA.
Madam President.
And so, we want to have on record that our board has decided that we know that we're in need of a headquarter hotel. Now, whether or not you looked at it, uh, as you know, as you always say, the commissioners don't talk to each other, and we don't. So I was under the impression that you, you said you saw some drafts, and so you have not seen the final one. So we can, we will go over the resolution and take a look at it. And then you also have opportunity before Thursday to continue to take a look at it, because we'll be voting on it on Thursday.
But Madam President, I wanna make sure that my, you know, I've, you know, I've sat here for, going on my second year, and my character has been attacked on more than one occasion, and I wanna correct it, because I, I work very hard, everybody knows that, and I read a lot. Now, we had multiple things that have been sent to us, and we were told that today we would have a chance to have that discussion, so I don't want it to put out there that I was sent something over the weekend, and I, I got something at 7:00 AM that was different than was sent on Friday. No, we gotta, we gonna say it, we got to say it.
Wait a minute.
Now, secondly, no, point of order is, order, order as I'm talking.
No, the point of order is-
Order, order as I'm talking. I have the floor.
The point of order is, I'm the president, and I'm leading this meeting, and I am not attacking your character.
Well, I was, I had the floor.
Excuse me. I'm just questioning why you did not get this before now.
And I'm giving you an answer. I'm giving you an answer.
So we're not, I'm not attacking your character.
Well, I, I did, I'm giving you an answer, and I gave that answer earlier, and we keep going on it. Now, I asked about your January 31st. I've not seen anything in writing saying that FIFA needed something from us on January 31st. Second is, on January 31st, I'm okay with us writing a letter that we're gonna have a hotel. Does January 31st say that 3CDC has to be voted on by January 31st? I just wanna have all of the facts. And I did not, no one gave me any, I've never seen one email saying that January 31st, FIFA needed to know this. At the same time, I don't see anything where FIFA said we need to have 3CDC be the person. So I just wanna, I, I mean, I just, I just wanna make sure, because it was said that I didn't read it, and I wanna just say that nothing I have has that in there.
Well, the 31st has been in a lot of our emails, so I don't, maybe we need to check your email system.
Oh, yeah, bring my emails, because let's, bring, can you bring my phone?
But anyway, on point of order, we're gonna move to Commissioner Drehouse for her comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I would like to just bring a little bit of, um, my perspective historically to the conversation, because this, to me, is a moment in time where we have a real opportunity to make some progress down at the Convention Center District. We have been working on this for years, trying to get control as the city and the county of these properties that are surrounding the Convention Center, knowing that we can't do anything related to expansion at the Convention Center unless we have a viable headquarter hotel. And so we, um, got control of that property, it took a lot of doing, it took a lot of expense. We finally did it, um, we've been working on that for many, many years, and the board finally got control of the property, um, knowing that that could be used in the future, either for an expansion of the Convention Center, or for a headquarter hotel, or something else. But those were the things that we were thinking through at that time when we made that, it was a substantial investment in time and money. And so, um, as we have moved forward and tried to understand the benefit of having all those properties around Convention Center at our disposal, you, you start to think about a district or a campus approach, which I think is the right approach to this, uh, part of town that has languished for many years, as has been mentioned. And so we finally have the pieces in place where the Convention Center, owned by the city, in coord, in, maintained in coordination with the county. We've got the property across the street that is owned by the Port Authority, and it gives us a great opportunity for a potential hotel on that site. We've got the one where the Millennium sits and is being torn down, that we can use for an expansion or something else that we decide on in the future. And then we've got these other pieces, Convention Place and the, um, garage that was referenced. And as we think through the collective, you know, there's a real opportunity here to create some energy in the space and not do things piecemeal as has been done in the past, because we just haven't had control of all these properties in the past. And so this idea that we bring in 3CDC to help coordinate this, um, and, and do it in coordination with the city and the county, to my view, is the right approach. I mean, it, I've been, um, called on the carpet a couple of times about not working as closely with the city as we might. And so here is an opportunity for us to work with, in lockstep with the city, with, uh, 3CDC coordinating the effort, not stepping in as, um, the primary authority, because they don't have the primary authority. The city and the county have the primary authority here. But we are doing it in conjunction with the city. My understanding is they have, I don't know if they've already passed the resolution, or they have it in front of them, something very similar to what we have in front of us. And so I am, uh, I, I'm, feel optimistic about that. I think we said this about the new council and the new mayor, that, you know, there's a lot of optimism about our working relationship with the city right now. We've had a good relationship in the past, but this new group is really moving quickly and wants to work in coordination with the county. So, um, I take that to heart and am anxious to get this thing moving as well. Um, the one thing I do wanna highlight is that, um, the, the Convention Center Hotel has been discussed in, in a number of ways here, but from my vantage point, the importance of that hotel going up as quickly as we can is to rejuvenate the tourism industry in this region post-COVID. And I know we're not post-COVID, but we'll get there eventually. Um, but we need to get moving on this, because it is the one thing, even with the Millennium standing, it is the one thing that has held us back in getting conventions, because the Millennium did not serve the purpose of a real, top-notch, uh, headquarter hotel. And so knowing that, that has come down, we've gotten control there, but that's what's in front of us, is putting together a plan so that we can have a headquarter hotel that will draw conventions to this area, and hopefully create a need for an expansion of the Convention Center. Right? I mean, these things all work together, they all work hand in hand. And so I think this is a real opportunity for us to work with the city, with, and never mind all the other stakeholders. There are many, many stakeholders, um, that will be part of this process. And my, my only question is, and I guess it's to 3CDC, or maybe it's to, um, the administrator, you know, as we move through this, and the city receives update, and the county receives updates, I want to make sure that we have that information on a regular basis, so that we can track the progress here, especially related to the hotel, um, as we move forward. And so I don't know what is contemplated by way of the frequency of those updates, but I hope we can, Madam President, get that on a regular schedule for Tuesdays for staff meetings, so that we can do a Q and A related to the progress of, um, this Convention Center District.
The resolution indicates that we'll have quarterly reports, where we certainly can say, um, or agree that we have at every staff meeting, it's up to, uh, the board and how frequently they would like those, um, reports to come in.
Can I, I, just to interrupt, I did, I don't mean every staff meeting, because I think that probably would be too much, but I, I think quarterly makes sense, may, and it, but as needed, perhaps, um, if we find that we want something to, uh, come in more frequently, if there's, uh, you know, an opportunity to talk about what is in the offing related to a headquarter hotel as we get closer to something, um, I think maybe we wouldn't wanna hold ourselves to a quarterly meeting.
Madam President, if I, if I could just briefly, I think the way the resolution is written, the way the scope of work is currently written, um, also dictates that, uh, 3CDC would be reporting, uh, routinely to myself and to the city manager. Uh, so certainly if there was anything, uh, of note that needed to come up, that could be brought to staff meeting immediately. And I have no doubt, uh, from my conversations with them, that, uh, Mr. Leeper, Mr. Geltor would make themselves available for, uh, uh, staff meeting presentations, as you had said, Madam President, on a quarterly basis, or more frequently if needed.
Thank you so much. Um, from the chair, I'd like to make a motion to delay our discussion of the resolution, since my colleagues have not had adequate time to review of the resolution. We would discuss it at our Thursday, uh, meeting, and then vote on it also on, on that day. So I'd like to make a motion from the chair to delay the discussion of the resolution. Is there a second?
I, is there a second?
Second.
So, just by way of discussion, I, um, I, in my office, we've had this since last year. We, we had something from 3CDC last year, we had language, we had conversations about it, so I, I will take as much time as the other offices need to take, but I am fully prepared to move forward.
Thank you so much. Yes.
President, if you wanna introduce the resolution, that's fine. Uh, but to, uh, Commissioner Drehouse, I, I just wanna clarify something. Um, Convention Center, I mean, having a convention hotel, I'm okay with. This goes beyond a convention hotel. And you're, she's right, I didn't have this till December last year, they tried to push it through during the, the budget, well, we had a budget, we were trying to do the tax rebate, and they said, "Well, hold it until now, January," but this still stays the same. This is what, this is where the rubber meets the road, and this is what I got a problem with, the scope of work. So I don't know how we address that, Madam President, but this scope of work, that's what I wanted to say, they could do any type of resolution, but this scope of work gotta change. There's no partnership in it, there's no real commitment to the, the partnership of equity, ownership, none of that is in here. And this, you're right, it's been, they've been running with this for a while. Um, and the issue of doing a national search, when I first got it in December, I said, "Let's do a national search." But nothing, nothing shook. So, uh, I do want to stand to be corrected, your, the last resolution that I received was at 12:47 PM today. Uh, says, "Please see the latest, not necessarily final draft of resolution for downtown Convention District." So it wasn't at 7:00 AM, it was at 12:47 PM, so you're right. But, um, Madam President, if we do delay it, can we somehow deal with the scope of work, because this is the, the main piece?
The scope of work is a attachment to the resolution. Um, so we will discuss the scope of work also on Thursday. So we have a motion on the floor?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Summer Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I could just, uh, from a, um, order of business perspective, so I think as it relates to the question about the scope of work and the resolution, so the city obviously has the same scope of work that they're considering with their, with their motion as well, so I would just, um, ask the board that if there are any desired changes to that scope of work, that they be reflected in the resolution. Ultimately, what will have to happen here is the, uh, the development of a, of an MOU between the city, the county, and 3CDC, which would then include an agreed-upon scope of work. So if there's any changes at all, uh, that the board would like in that, prescribe it through the resolution, and, and that would be direction to the administration to work on those with 3CDC and, and the city.
Well, we have listed on the resolution, which we're not gonna discuss right now, but I wanted to, whereas it says, "As included in our attached scope of work." I would like to see that scope of work separate than the resolution. Attached, but separate, because that discussion of the scope of work, I think, could, there's so many things on that scope of work. But if we can agree on the resolution and what we're intending to do, agree or disagree, I think that's where we need to go. But of course, the scope of work, we can make suggestions, recommendations, but I don't want it to stop the passage or lack of passage of the resolution, so.
Madam President, I also say to the administration, the scope of work is why I'm concerned, because this is the contract. And in the past, this is where the people have gotten screwed on the contracts. Um, and, and that's why I am concerned, it is, it's nothing personal with anything or the administration. I, we got people sitting there that can't talk right now, they done brought conventions, National Baptists, the Maces is here, the, the, the NAACP. We got to get this right, whether it's at the, at the city and the county, because this is the only thing that matters. Every time I get here, they say, "Go to the contract." We've done, um, you know, we're, we're reading the stadium deals, they tell me, "Go to the contract." This is the most important thing, and this, um, Madam President, is why I guess I'm so passionate about it, because this is what I got a problem with. And I hope that we can work between now and then, the administrator, the, uh, city manager, and get this, and we want it in writing on the front end, instead of putting minorities and African-Americans on the back end. The back end has never worked. We wanna try something different.
The people that are present here that thought you might be able to speak, uh, comments are accepted on Thursday, so, uh, if you thought you could come, comment today, I apologize for that. But if you'd like to come back on Thursday, you're certainly welcome to comment. Thank you very much. We'll move forward. Um, we have an executive session that we need to go in, um, and I will make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121, Point 22, G2, to discuss the acquisition of property.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Summer Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.[1653.28]